Then had an increase of ninety-five thousand nine fourteen, basically due to all projects and debt and things that they issued this year. The CDC had a total net position of three hundred and seventy-two thousand three eighty-five, and they had an increase of fifty-two thousand six eighty-three, which is basically just sales tax dollars. Uh, the one weakness, well, there's actually two, but one related to the city, and I don't want to talk about it too long, but there was some internal control issues over at the Public Works Department. It's detailed in the, in the communication and material weaknesses, but up here I was going to go over our recommendation, and that is that the city establish and implement proper internal controls to track and report inventory held at the Public Works Department. And from the discussions that I've had with the city, I think they're on that, that role. Uh, also due to the remote location of the department, we do recommend the city strengthen internal controls to provide for the appropriate safeguard vehicles, equipment, and facility supervision staff. Again, the city is moving in that direction already, so I do look for that to clear up. Other recommendations that we had, um, that are not findings, or just recommendations, is to continue to refine the gearing and closing procedures to make sure that everything is, is properly closed at the end of the year. There are some check signers that are heavily involved with the financial process, and sometimes we consider, we just actually consider removing them or make sure there's checks and balances where they don't have too much, uh, leeway, given that they're involved with the financial process. The inventory, implement written policies and procedures and report inventory, that goes with the other, other finding. It's just definitely need to have an inventory system, and I know we actually are looking to implement that now. Uh, state court costs just need to be booked at the end of the year as part of closing. The bond refunding, uh, when you do a bond refunding, we definitely need to look at the fund level as well as the overall level and amortize the bond from there. Uh, the EDC is really, this is a repeat finding, because what happens is they do a lot of transactions over there that are pretty complicated, and they use their own system, QuickBooks. And it's just, it's easy if you just write checks and pause it, that's fine. But then you've got to, they issued two million dollars in bonds, did quite a few projects, and it's very difficult for the staff there to do those things, and then also just understanding how to close the books at the end of the year, and that's mainly what this finding is about. So, uh, they maintain their, it's very difficult for the board or anyone there to timely detect incorrect errors. And we did come up with, no one really closed. We kind of, uh, got wedged into that position, actually, and came up with, you know, ten, twelve adjustments that are truly closing adjustments. So, uh, they didn't, as this said, they did not close, and there were material adjustments. So that's why it's material weakness. And also just consider moving it over to Assist. Every other city that I audit has EDCs and CDCs, but they always put the books just as a fund in Assist. That doesn't mean that it's not its own separate entity with its own separate board. The board still recommends what to spend money on, but then they'll send a check request over. The city will prepare it, and then the board member will come over and cite it. So everything still goes the same, it's just the counting and all of that is part of the city. So I do recommend that. Uh, these are just a list of the, basically the adjustments and things that I want the EDC to pay attention to. And the reason I defined them out is because a lot of times I just get the question, what closing entries are you talking about? And so basically, this list of recommendations are the closing entries. So the first one is to refine your closing process, that's what I've been talking about. The uncollectible loan receivable, just those kinds of things have to be properly reported. Sales tax need to be calculated and properly reported, receivable. The AP at the end of the year, there's going to be payable, so it has to be calculated. Payroll, uh, and then bond issuance costs. Uh, the EDC did issue, as I said, two million, one hundred and sixty thousand in bonds, and that, that was just booked as revenue instead of a liability, which makes sense. That's what you would do if you were a bookkeeper, and you'd be fine, but it's just got to be handled at the end of the year in the closing process. There was also debt payments that were not properly filed, accrued interest was not calculated, the discount was not added, the EDC did exceed appropriations by three hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and ten dollars. And that's basically because of the capital outlays that we made for the projects this year. Uh, the CDC, we also do recommend that they move over to Assist. It wasn't as many errors, but the primary reason for that is they don't do as much. They basically collect sales dollars and make contributions here and there, but they don't have the activity that EDC has. And that's why it was not material weakness for them, and just a recommendation to move that fund out of QuickBooks and into Assist. Uh, because that, they did not look their AP, but that was the only thing that was. Uh, the other letter that I have in my packet is the required governance communication letter. That's all pretty standard as well. There's, uh, sensitive estimates from your allowances for coordinate disclosures or long-term debt. We didn't really encounter any difficulties in the audit. It was delayed a little bit while management was working on the inventory issue, but that's the only thing that happened, and that's why it's obvious. Um, there, there is a list in that letter of the corrected and uncorrected disstatements for the city in Schedule A and B. So if you look at that, you see the cheap list of the audit adjustments. There were no disagreements with management. And so with that being said, I would like to thank everybody. Lain, Robert, Jennifer, Rodney, and Tiffany were very helpful, and we appreciate that. So if there's any questions or comments on the rest of the panel.
Thank you, Ms. Halli. You're a comprehensive reporter. She's the new host on this, very, very proud of her.
Yeah.
Questions from the council? Questions from the others?
It sounds like very familiar to the EDC, and the problem with QuickBooks.
Yes.
I wonder why it's still being down on the page. I think it is one of the problems that used to be for.
May I address that picture?
I'm going to ask you another question from the city.
This definitely is not the first time we've heard about, uh, moving EDC from QuickBooks to Assist. And the, uh, prior board, uh, of the EDC, uh, reluctantly agreed to allow us to make that migration, and we were in the process of doing so, and then were insistent that it be kept in QuickBooks. You know, we did our part on the city to try and get that migration done, but they just were not willing to live with the standard Assist. That's not a reflection on this particular board. This particular board is very cooperative, uh, as a result of carrying it now three times. We've met with the CDC, EDC, their leadership. Eddie Peacock has been employed, uh, kind of to bridge, you know, some needs that we have in finance, and he has appointments with the EDC, and we are going to make that migration happen this time. And we still have to work out an ILA, because there's a cost associated that aren't taking time to do that service, but I'm sure we can work that.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Parker.
Hey. Hearing that, I would prefer that extra item to be included. Thanks again, Senator. We appreciate your diligence and working that hard way to move the city. Reminds us, item five, we've included all business of the special called City Council. We declare that for the future agenda, and I'll make some projections. Hearing that, that we will be zoning board adjusting, which I will call four forty-six twenty-eight. And it actually says six thirty, I'll give it along with.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mr. Jones first.
You need to take action to approve the audit.
Thank you. The audit, apparently.
Item four, think any action necessary regarding the audit? Would anyone like to make a motion? Is following any motion to, on the second, the motion to, uh, approve the audit, the city audit has presented?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Time to vote, all in favor of accepting the audit, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, that motion carries unanimously. It's having a proper adjournment, so anyone like to add to the adjournment? And a motion to adjourn, special policy, council, if this is a fair decision. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Now it's six thirty. Some people called to order the zoning board adjustment maybe, and we have public carriers and items for consideration. Before we get into the carrying, we have approval of minutes on the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one zoning board adjustment maybe. We have this, uh, zoning board adjustment that the city, those minutes are effective, there are any comments or corrections to the minutes that were sent out. Hearing that, we entertain a motion. Thank you, most of you approved it. A motion to approve the minutes of July thirteenth, the zoning board adjustment is the second. Motion asked, again, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Now, we're going to have a public carrier who are either trying to argue with this or the zoning board adjustment. Conduct a public carrier regarding a request and owner opinion for a variance in Van Alstine cover ordinances as follows. Paragraph one, chapter twenty-eight, subdivision and land development, article ten, design standard, section thirty-eight, S T five eight, general construction and improvements to grant a variance from the Van Alstine parking lot standard, requiring parking lots to be paved in concrete. Item two, chapter forty-six, zoning, N H one B, non-residential period regulations, to grant a variance from the required side yard setback on a can, item three, chapter forty-six, zoning, section forty-six dash one forty-one, parking regulations to grant a variance from the required number of parking spaces for a retail establishment. The subject property is described as Otown Plant and Austin Edition, lot one, lot thirty-three, generally located in the northwest corner of State Avenue five, South Waco Street, and West Streetport Street, more commonly known as three oh six South Waco Street. And we have a map.
Action first.
Thank you. With the prior picture, I think, the back of three oh six South Waco Street. This is the applicant here tonight. Yes, please come up. Thank you. Yes.
See that there?
Yes.
And Kristy Mercurio?
Welcome.
So this was previously approved, I believe, on some of the setbacks that were asking for, uh, from the, the donut shop, I believe. Um, the only variation that could be the parking lot, we prefer, you know, the western way to go with the crushed granite instead of the concrete. And the purpose for wanting to want that is because, um, it was suggested to us by the city, the people in the, um, city would like to keep that historical value of the building, we're trying to keep that with the brick, and the footprint we're keeping with the army, that would be a building area. And we want to keep that historical value, and we prefer that, because of the crushed granite would fit better.
If you could go back to the slide a little.
This is a fellow here, right? Yes, it is a fellow here. Okay, thanks for your comment, Senator. All right, this is the other time in the public comment. I have one, Jennifer Novoskowakowski. Uh, we're probably located at one seven Paddle Street, it's her, but, and she supports it. Proved variance requests for all reasons, if the fences need to be brought up to help the noise and belt over free, over for street.
We did plan to, I said, to do, um, uh, screening trees, I say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for your comment. Any other comments from the public at this time? Second call for comments from the public regarding the three oh six South Waco. Request for variance. And the third call, the final call for comments from the public regarding a request for three variance possession. Hearing that, we put a public hearing portion of this to be concluded, and we will now move to city council comments, which is item four, maybe, if there's no objection over suspense to reading the legal descriptions again. Hearing that, we can discuss item four. We have six South Waco Street, we have three variances, parking lot standards to be paid in concrete, then a variance from the required side yard setback, and number of parking spaces.
Do we need a side yard setback or something that's going to be current?
Maybe I could add a little clarity. Um, the side yard setback is, is, the building is placed right on the side yard, and so they would have to remove the building in order to do the, you know, building with a setback. This is the existing situation with the building, so this would just be continuing this, continuing, uh, this existing situation. Also, the number of parking place, that was also, um, approved a couple of years ago when the donut shop was thinking about going in there. Uh, the number of parking spaces also needs to be reduced from twelve to ten, just because of the limitation of the site. And they don't want to put parking in the front because they want that, um, nice facade to be visible. And that was also approved, uh, previously. The one that's new is the, um, difference in paving, and that's why I included those other two, um, um, houses there that are businesses. They both have, um.
Well, one is residential now.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, one, uh, residential now.
Okay. Um, but they both have a significant amount of parking that's using the crushed gravel, and it's well-maintained, and it looks good. Um, and that's why we're recommending approval of this in this particular situation.
Can we go to the pictures quickly, the, the. Slide shows you. It is, five oh three South Waco is residential, uh, and four twenty-six is. Sorry.
Act thirty-four.
Oh, thank you. Yes, we could make that. Four twenty-six is the flower shop. Tell us more. Okay. Mr. Neal.
Yeah, uh, did y'all, uh, just purchase this?
We're, we're in the process of it.
Okay. Um, so for the crushed granite side of it, like, you go to that business over there, the flower shop, like, their kind of parking is kind of a mess, and then your other example would be the, uh, food trucks with the crush, like, people just come park everywhere. That's my only issue with the crushed, uh, gravel, is you don't know where you're parking or where your spouse is parking unless it's defined. What kind of business is, like, planning on going in there essentially, essentially, like, how it's going to be utilized in the parking sector?
Um, what I, what I do is I probably create natural body care, so I currently have three stores. And we don't ever have a parking issue because we're not going like a restaurant, and we're not a mall. So usually, at any given time, even during a holiday, we can have five, six cars of parking, so this would be well above what we would need, so I think that the parking and how we would fit there would fit appropriately at least.
Do you have any, uh, kind of like renderings of how that would look in the current, kind of how it's plotted out right now? How you would manage the parking or the crushed granite, like, how it would flow in and out?
And then we could, um, Fifth Street or Waco, they're coming on the side street.
Okay.
So that would make parking easier, and they could just pull right into spots instead of coming right into the front. The one thing that we could do for a handicap parking spot is the front, so that somebody can just pull in with a larger fan, and then they have room to utilize, and be right there by the front door.
Is that currently concrete under that?
It is, yeah. And for the, for the reason of wheelchair access, we would keep it, the concrete in the front.
Thanks, that was a good question. Um, I missed what you said at the time, about what kind of business?
Um, I'm a retail business, so I develop and create natural body care. I grow about forty percent of the ingredients on my farm, and I process it, and we make, um, organic, young organic body care out of it.
Great. Ryan, anything else?
I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other council members, questions, comments?
I guess I don't understand the reason for the gravel, other than the cost, um, as far as keeping the historical value. I don't, we have concrete in front, so that doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, we want to keep the historical value of the building, and it's been brought up to us by several, um, what we would call customers in our future around that area, and it's been brought up to us that they like the historical look. We can think that the crushed gravel does bring a better appeal to it, um, especially that home that we're trying to preserve, um, in here.
Is that also one of the city recommendations of, is we have important, it's not to be that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's the answer. That, that is a very unique building.
It is.
And I, I get multiple comments about that building. I think this will be a great application, a use for that building that provides, you know, retail environment and not a bunch of traffic in and out of that area. So when we looked at it, gravel seemed to be an appropriate use there.
So in that picture, there is also a lot on the south side still on the west side of Waco. Is that part of your property as well?
Yes. To the, to the right?
To the left, as you look at that picture.
Because that lot would be the.
That'd be the gravel.
The parking, the others that they file. Yeah.
Right.
Is that your, oh, yes.
What are comments on the condition?
So it would just be the spot on the left, and you wanted the gravel.
That's correct.
How many parts, like, how many, um, how many parts, like, should we require when the donut shop is there? And how many did they, and they go down fifteen?
Well, the variance was to twelve for the donut shop, and because they were a restaurant, they needed fifteen or sixteen, I believe. This is retail, so that's, they need half of that, so they think they need twelve, and we, we're, they're requesting, so it moves to.
Ten, you know, that's in part, is that including the handicap lot, or is that ten plus a handicap lot?
Twelve.
Yeah. One handicap.
Just one.
One.
So it would be nine on the side and one on the front?
Other questions, or comments from the city council?
Was the concrete, you're not messing with concrete, are you?
No.
Well, comment, in case anyone's inclined to make a motion, and we should go on it, the variance does require four hundred of the votes for variance. Just so we know.
And you said the setback is already, it's already approved, it's already done?
Well, it, it was existing, and it was approved before to allow the building to remain.
Okay. I think the motion is approved, all three variances.
And the motion to approve all three variances, as per something, is, wait a second, it was covered. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing that, it's time to vote, all in favor of granting all three variances is touching on it in our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously, thank you all very much.
Good luck, Aaron. Anything better than what happened with that?
All right, we're still meeting as the zoning board adjustment, we've come up item five on our agenda. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner of the agent for a variance to the Van Alstine cover ordinances, chapter thirty-eight, subdivision and land development, article ten, design standard, section thirty-eight dash two five eight, general construction and improvements to grant variance from the Van Alstine parking lot standard, requiring parking lots and internal square limits to be paved in concrete. The applicant is requesting the expanded use of crushed gravel for two proposed warehouse buildings. Crushed gravel is currently being used for the existing building. The two point five acre tract of land is situated in Estaway Precinct, abstract under one three three two, Grace and Kent, Texas, generally located on the south side of Martin Duke Road, approximately two thousand, eight hundred feet west of, at, um, thirty one thirty-three, and more commonly known as six oh one Martin Duke Road. Is the applicant here today? Yes, sir. Any comments you would like us to consider, and this is the public hearing portion, so other people, any questions or comments?
That, that really sums it up right there. We, uh, we have a fifteen thousand square foot existing, uh, industrial building in the north end of your industrial park. Uh, we are M two in that location, and, uh, there's a couple of other large companies over there, Techline, Mustang Manufacturing, and, um, there's, uh, basically a grid driveway on that road, except for a whole new work done by Mustang recently is, uh, is a crushed concrete parking lot firing. And what we'd like to do is, we'd like to continually utilize our existing crushed, uh, fire lane and extend it, staff on our property to be the fire lane for the two additional warehouse buildings we'd like to build in the back. We moved to town in eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, and we grew a lot over the last three years. Twenty was a great boom year for us, seems like everybody wanted what we had to sell last year, and, uh, we are busting at the seams again inside this fifteen thousand square foot building. So these two warehouses in the back, they give us the operation room we need to grow and continue to meet our customer needs, and we want to just, basically, just like I was saying.
Very good, thank you for your comments. This is the public hearing portion, I mean, so it's the public's opportunity, if you want to make comment, you may ask questions. The applicant is not required to answer those questions, nor is counsel, so we may try. This is an opportunity to comment on the request for a variance for six oh one Martin Duke Road. Second call for comments from the public. And third and final call for comments from the public regarding the variance request for six oh one Martin Duke. Hearing that, I would declare the public hearing to be closed, and it is now time for item six, in consideration from the council, which with no objection, I will endorse. Referring from, reviewing the legal description, we are discussing the, uh, request to use crushed gravel as a parking service at six oh one Martin Duke Road. Council members? I have the same question, I would have asked the previous applicant, she already answered it, and I know it's not retail, and you may not, and a warehouse, that you may not have customers coming back there, but you could have employees who are hot divine, or either permanently requires a better service to get into the building, because a lot of crunches, alter, wheelchair, whatever, still a plan to get people into the building, you cannot mitigate it.
Yes, yes, we have, uh, we plan to, it, it's already handicap parking on the concrete in front of the existing building, and there will be concrete pads in front of the doors and concrete pads for handicap parking. and concrete pads for handicap parking by the main door, access doors, the areas.
Thank you.
Is it concrete, coming off con, I'm trying to figure out where this is at, you said it's behind your current building, correct?
Are you familiar with where Techline is located? By the road, correct? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're just down the hill from that.
Oh, okay.
Just a little bit down the hill from that.
So, did you say you're building the building in the back, or behind it?
Yes, two warehouses behind Ninety-Sixty Building.
So you'll be going on concrete, then going off concrete, then the gravel gets to the other two, or will...
No, I'm building off of crushed concrete, and I'm, I'm pulling off of the, the kind of asphalt road, and Martin Duke is kind of a asphalt top road, uh, onto my crushed rock fire lane that exists right now, and what I want to do is continue that crushed rock fire lane parking lot, it's already in place, but I'm just, I'm trying to get approval for it. So there's already fifteen thousand dollars worth of crushed concrete down there, so we need, we need to be able to run eighteen-wheelers to the end, and then turn around, as you deliver.
Does that have any issues, since it's a fire lane, with no issues there of blocking or anything like that, with eighteen-wheelers? Um, our ordinance, we need a separate lane for fire lane, or...
We're good.
We do have a fire lane, and, um, it meets the requirements.
Well, and I know it's fire lane now, but if they're using it as constant in and out with eighteen-wheelers and stuff like that, would be, would be so considered what...
It's pretty typical that fire lanes use the same drive aisle as, as the employees, and by the way, they're not asking for a reduction in parking, they're doing the parking that's required by ordinance. They're just asking for material change.
Not even material change, we're just asking to continue what you're...
Correct. Other questions or comments? I'll make the same comment I did before, if the request requires four parking codes to grant a variance. Could be time for a motion, if we've got any questions. And a motion and a second to approve the request of variance at six oh one Martin Duke Road. Any discussion on a motion? Time to vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously as well, thank you for your discussion. Item seven, our incoming board of adjustment, please adjourn, there's somebody that's down there. Three, I'm going to adjourn for adjournment, is zoning board... Give me a second. All in favor of adjournment, is zoning board adjustment, please say aye. Anyone else say, Walker, we stand adjourned for the zoning board adjustment. Moving to our third meeting of the night, we sit down and begin. And I will call that, people, six, eight, one. Citizens communication. This is the portion of the meeting where each citizen stands, he can consult with any comment he wishes, if you have three minutes, if you wish to do so. Council may follow the factual information only, and not require nor are being guaranteed the answering questions, but they could do so with factual information, we typically, we do not engage in debate on any items that are not on the agenda, is that a bit illegal? Um, if there is something that's an item on the agenda, you can quote a comment of that time, if you wish. Any citizen should be likely to rest the council in any capacity. Second call for citizen communication, and a third and final call, we will be preparing now, we will declare the citizen communication portion of the meeting to be over, and we will move to item three, which is our executive session. I am required to read this. Pursuant to the following designated sections of Texas Government Code, intithed, the subchapter five oh one, council well entered into executive session to discuss the following items. A, Texas Government Code, section five oh one, one point zero seven one, neighbor advice regarding high future development and a high formation of a city charter condition. Attorney will be joined in this via double term, wouldn't want anyone to think or consult with the attorney who wasn't here, who is here at the front. I will... At six fifty-two, we will move to executive session. And you'll have to stay here for half a minute.
I'm going to think that, I'm going to use some call you for this one.
Yeah. Where do you want to go?